And it's somewhat of a housekeeping issue, but we should mention it?
Okay.
Would you have the best information on the issue?
Okay, so you want me to give the quick rundown of it?
If you wouldn't mind, please.
Okay. So there was a stormwater permit issued on Holman Street in the summer of 2021. The, it was for seven individual house lots, two of which were to be purchased and left unbuildable by abutters, two of which were purchased by an individual builder, and the remaining three were purchased by a separate builder. One of those lots, it became evident that building on would have required a significant modification due to the two lots purchased by the abutter, so that lot has been taken out of play. Two homes were built with the stormwater facilities, or BMPs, two were built without. One was conveyed in January and given a certificate of occupancy by the building inspector without the construction of the stormwater facilities. This came to light at time of final inspection on the second home. So I have been working with the builder to secure funds to ensure that the BMPs on both of those lots will be installed and that to ensure that the homeowner who has purchased is rectified, his lot is rectified and has the stormwater BMPs, and the folks who intend to purchase will be able to close, unfortunately not on the time that they would like to, but within a reasonable amount of time, hopefully within the next two weeks or so. So I have agreements that have been reviewed by town council that will be sent to the builder for signature and for the board to sign at their next meeting. I am in receipt of cashier's checks for the funds for both properties, and I have spoken with our review engineer, and he will review the installations.
Okay. So I think, I think that's pretty much as much as we need to talk about that for now. We're going to have it on our agenda for our next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. And I purposely did that before public comments because I understood there may be somebody with a public comment to do with that, to fill us in on any additional information that may be required. Is that person here?
Regarding 147.
Regarding the stormwater permit that we just discussed, please?
Thank you for your time. I just wanted to point out that I represent the buyers who are, who are about to purchase 147 Holman. They're actually supposed to close on their home today. And unfortunately, they weren't able to as a result of this decision that needs to be made by the board on the 27th. So I just wanted to speak on behalf of them. They're, they're a young couple, they're moving from the city, they're very excited to move to Lunenburg and call Lunenburg their home. And I encourage you to certainly look at the information, ask questions, but I hope that the 27th, the board will be able to vote in favor of this so we can close on the 28th. When it comes to purchasing homes, there's a matter of interest rates, and the interest rates continue to rise, and they may not be able to purchase the home if there's significant delay simply because of the interest rates. So it's, it's really causing a lot of anxiety. So anything you need from us, please let us know, but I certainly hope you can vote in favor of the following meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right, I think that rounds that up. Is there any other public comment? Okay, is there anybody in the waiting room or anybody online?
There's none.
Okay. Then I guess we'll move right into our first item, A and R plan for 100 Howard Street?
Good evening, board members. My name is Seth Donahue. I'm with Dillison Roy Civil Design Group. When you're ready, I'd be happy to give you a brief overview of the plan we've presented.
I think we are ready.
Excellent. So I see you have reduced copies there, and we submitted the Form A and accompanying documents to your staff. What we're proposing to do is create four conforming lots on the property that's presently known as MAP 15 parcel 12. It's approximately 66 acres. The four lots are depicted on the right side of the plan on the board, lots one, two, three, and four. All four lots will utilize frontage on West Townsend Road, and they'll all exceed the minimum area requirements specified in the bylaw. The property is in the outlying zoning district, which requires a minimum of 80,000 square feet lot area for, excuse me, a traditional lot, or 160,000 square feet for a 50% reduced frontage lot. If you have any questions on the plan, I'd be happy to address them.
I'll go ahead and let you look, the, so you've got three reduced frontage and one conforming?
That's correct.
Okay, and the, we're only supposed to be looking at frontage and area. However, I do feel pertinent, and I'm sure that your client is well aware, that the Malpus Brook is a considerable water body, which is going to be restrictive on the buildability?
That's correct, yes. And you'll see that the lots, especially Lot 1 and Lot 4, are immensely oversized to accommodate that as well. So while our client is doing future planning for the property by creating these lots now, he will take that into consideration.
Mr. Willsmer, do you have any, any input on this?
He's still with us. Sorry, couldn't figure out my unmute. I don't see anything in, in particular that seems unusual. Yeah.
Okay, very good. Mrs. Reed?
I agree. I don't see anything, I guess, out of order. I don't really have any questions.
Okay. So, so this is another large lot of land. It was 66 acres and the remaining portion is 44 something?
Forty-four and change, correct. And there's excessive frontage, 900 feet on Howard Street and similar on West Townsend Road leftover.
Yep. Very good. I, short of any other comments, I would accept a motion to approve the A and R.
I will motion to approve the A and R submitted.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Excellent. So can we say approve rather than endorse, or does it matter?
It's going to say endorse in the minutes, so.
Okay, so.
We can say what you'd like.
Is there any further discussion on the endorsement? Hearing none, I will take a roll call vote, all in favor. Mr. Willsmer?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Thank you.
Can I let my client know that the Mylar will be ready for him to pick up in the near future?
Yeah, we'll have to reach out to you. I only have two here tonight, so when Mr. Willsmer can get through the office, we'll, we'll give you a call and let you know.
And thank you for your time. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next order of business is a waiver request from site plan approval for 1259 Massachusetts Avenue. Hello?
Yeah.
So name and address for the record, and welcome.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Melissa David. This is Kelly Hayes.
I'm Joshua Briannis. I'm the property owner for 1259 Mass Ave.
Okay.
And these two ladies are potential business tenant for our town. I think this property will work well for them, and they're looking to relocate from Lemonster. And we think it's a good fit, and we're just looking for the waiver of approval to see if they can get in there.
Okay. So waiver requests are typically looked at from the point of view of benefit to the town, and I'm not sure that there is any benefit to the town aside from getting a new business in town. That is a benefit, no doubt. The, the site plan approval is, 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 is there to ensure that when there is a change of use, which has been confirmed by the building inspector and our land use director, that it is in fact a change of use, that's when it triggers. And Mass Ave is a state route, so I guess, could you give us, oh, maybe I'll ask the land use director, how, what is your viewpoint on this? There didn't seem to be any pushback, so.
No, I, I think that this is similar to other properties the board has looked at and provided similar waivers to in the past. It's an existing property. The structure is there, the parking is there, the paving is there, the stormwater controls are there. The proposed business is looking to walk through the door and potentially do minor interior renovations and bring furniture in and locate there. I think if we look at, at things like 810 Mass Ave, which is where the nefarious, now nefarious, smoke shop is, and the pet store, that had seen a waiver similar to this prior to that business occupying the whole lot. The Smokestack Roasters establishment.
Just for clarification, that's eight slash?
Eight slash 10, yes. Not 810, yes. The Smokestack Roasters facility on Mass Ave, I think it's 39, did a similar thing. The parking was there. They were bringing a more intense use to what had been a previous car storage, the DBUS, at the same site. They were reoccupying existing buildings without making site modifications. They've been a viable contributing business to town. I think the establishment that was occupying this, this location previously had a similar business model to what's proposed, so I don't think we're looking at a traffic increase or a significant impact on the area specifically. If we were to be concerned about something, the Townsend Harbor Road intersection may be impacted by heavy traffic, but I don't think this, this establishment would bring that, that concern.
Sure. And just to regurgitate, the, the previous use was?
It was a massage business or a bodywork establishment.
And the proposed use is?
I suppose it would be medical or professional. We're going to be moving our outpatient mental health clinic there, but it's just the two of us, Kelly and I, we're the only clinicians at the business.
Okay. So the parking requirements?
They're based on business, on the business size. It's one per 250. There are seven spots there, plus the ADA spot, and that is in excess of what would be required for the building.
And there are no site modifications involved in this relocation? Okay. Very good. Anything else?
None for me.
Mr. Willsmer, do you have any further questions or comments?
Uh, no, I do not.
Okay. Well, since there is really no site change, and it is simply a change of use, and we have done similar in the past, I honestly don't see a reason not to waive the requirement. And short of anybody feeling differently, I guess I would accept a motion to accept the waiver request for site plan approval.
I would motion to accept the waiver request for the site plan approval.
Of 1259?
Oh, sorry, of 1259 Massachusetts Avenue.
That's fine. Is there a second?
Uh, yes, I second that.
Very good. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor by roll call vote. Mr. Willsmer?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Thank you very much, and welcome to Lunenburg.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next we have a public hearing continuation, right?
Correct.
Of 1325 Mass Ave. Continue from 19, January 9th. Oh, I didn't even ask you that, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was like wondering, I was like, is there paperwork?
I'm sorry.
I was like flying blind. That's fine.
So this is, there's nothing new here from, what's new here from the last meeting? From, from the last? A whole bunch?
A whole bunch? Yeah. The plans have, have changed. They have the renderings that they requested to bring. There is a letter from the abutter.
Okay. Evening.
Good evening. Are we ready to?
Welcome. Please do.
Okay, Greg Roy with Dillison Roy. I'm representing the Proctors, Dan and Jean Proctor, this evening, who are with us. And we were here a month ago to open the public hearing with your board, and at that time, we received several comments from your board, also several comments from the abutters. And at that time, the peer review letter had not been generated by Graves. So we, we opted to continue that meeting for, at that time, we continued it for two weeks. We still didn't have a peer review letter, you know, a few days prior to that, so we, we asked you to continue for an additional two weeks to give us time to address that. So in the meantime, between, between then and now, Graves issued, Graves Engineering, your peer review consultant, issued a letter on January 26th, which was their peer review comments. It had, it had 15 comments relative to the storm, mainly the stormwater and the, the hydraulic calculations that we provided, the stormwater report. And we were able to work through a planner vision and substantially address all of those comments. We did have a follow-up letter from Graves earlier, well, I guess last week, on February 10th, indicating that with the, with the exception of one small detail on a outlet control structure, which is really just a typo on the plan almost, we have, we have addressed all of their, all of their comments. I'm happy to go through those. Did you want me to go through the comments, or did you want to just?
As long as he says acknowledged and?
Yeah.
And whatnot, I think we don't need to rehash that, but there was just one?
There was one, we have an outlet structure, let's see here. We revised sheet C 7.1 to include an outlet control structure detail. However, construct, the construction detail needs to include the diameters of the drop-in grates. Column A in the construction details table shows elevations, but the A dimension on the construction detail pertains to the drop-in grate diameter, except for, anyway. I'm going to, I'm going to spare you the boring engineering talk. We basically just have an incorrect dimension on one of our outlet control structures, so we need to just update our table. It's a, it's a very, to, to correspond to how it was modeled and designed in our drainage calculation, so that's not a, not a huge problem. A few other things that we heard from, from your board was to provide you with a rendering. Also, we heard that from the abutters. So I'm going to put this, put this rendering on there. So we provided several, a few different renderings, but this is one of them that I think is the, one of the better pictures from the front of the site. So this is looking from the main entrance, and you can see basically the view from Massachusetts Avenue. The two office buildings are shown in white, the two, you know, commercial buildings shown in, are the white buildings in the front of the site. And then the contractor's storage use is shown in the back, and it's a gray, a dark gray structure that we're proposing. So this one gives you, gives you a view from, from that angle. I believe we also provided you some architectural plans that show some of the elevations and floor plans as well. So we wanted to make sure we were responsive to that. One of the other things that we heard from your board was to make sure that we circled back with the fire department relative to circulation, so we, we did do that. We, we talked to the fire department. They gave us, we just confirmed that we had the right, the correct truck dimensions that we used in our turning software, and, and updated that, and also provided the truck template on the plans and the, in the revised detail sheets, so that we could document those dimensions that were used. And then I think one of the, the main things I wanted to talk about this evening, we heard a lot of, we had a lot of discussion last time about landscaping and screening, so I want to, I want to go over what we've done relative to that. We also did provide you with a site cross-section on one of the detail sheets that kind of gives you a, we, we did a one-to-one cross-section of the, of the site, you know, sort of through the, I gotta, I gotta go to the plan, hold on. So we did a cross-section for you, kind of look, looking from the, if you were looking from the front of the site, you know, we did a cross-section kind of right through there. So kind of show you the relative grades of the, of the, you know, abutting property here relative to the proposed slope that we will have that will be, it'll be high here, low here, and then the building, and how that, and how that all lays out. And then we, we did some work along the, along this area here relative to our landscape screening, and I want to, I want to explain that a little bit. So it's a little bit difficult for me to see this, but there's this small row of green plants here that are on the subject parcel, is a row of white pines that the applicant has already planted. So that, those trees, there's, I think, maybe slightly less than 10 of them, or right around 10 of them, already exist today. Then there's a row of larger symbols there, as you can see, which are more mature white pines that are also existing on the site. And you can see the abutting house that's right, right there. And so now what we're, now what we're proposing to do is, these trees here, the larger trees are white pines. White pines over time get very tall, of course, and they tend to lose the understory, so you tend to lose the, the understory branches. So what we're proposing to do there is to put a row of arborvitae, which I think was shown on your previous, on the previously submitted plan. We're proposing to put a row of arborvitae along those existing larger pines that will sort of fill in the, the, the low, the low understory portions of the white pines, once those grow to maturity. So we'll sort of, we're trying to, we're trying to make a more contiguous screen there. And then we're also proposing a row of, I think, additional arborvitae's in this location here, so we would just extend those arborvitae's down. This is the plan that we submitted to your board, so that's the plan that you have in your packet. Subsequent to that, the applicant actually has met with the abutter, spent a little time on the site, trying to understand the, you know, the, the concerns a little, in a little bit more detail. And they're really looking for some additional, the abutter is looking for a few additional things, and I wanted to show you, do I have that plan, Ryan, on this? Okay. Bear with me. So, and, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, but my understanding is that the porch that exists on this, on this building, there's a few view corridors that are really important to the, to the abutter. And so we, we tried to take into consideration some of that and work in some of the suggestions that the abutter gave us. So one of the things they asked us to do is to try to work in some berms, so that in addition to the vegetative screening that we'd have at the top of the slope, there would actually be an additional height of, of earth that those could be planted on. Because of the existing trees that are already planted, we really can't do anything here. But one of the view, viewscapes that they were worried about was looking towards the, the front building here, so we have actually incorporated a berm in this area, and we have included some additional plantings, and I'll talk about species in a minute. And again, you do not have a copy of this, but I'm just, this has sort of been a work in progress since we submitted the plans. And then same thing over here, we worked the berm around as far as we could down this way, and then we're proposing, instead of the arborvitae row here, we're proposing to do a mix of spruce trees and cypress, which is some species that the, that the abutter requested of us. So we have no problems doing those species, and we, you know, propose to, you know, put those in this clump here and also this clump over here. So we're really trying to be responsive. We feel like that screen there, which really goes, you know, several hundred feet from that point all the way back, you know, once that's vegetated, we're trying to put a pretty dense vegetated buffer in there combined with a, with a, with an earthen berm. So I wanted to sort of land on that relative to the plantings. We also added a few other things. The applicant had committed to do a, sort of a wildflower planting area down here, so we added that to the landscape plan with a few other plantings in this area for one of the abutters in that location. So we tried to sort of bring the current plan up to include all of the things that we had committed to, and, and after receiving direct input from this board and also the, the abutters at the last meeting. That's really the bulk of the, the plan presentation I wanted to give this evening. I did want to give the board an update on other permits that we're working on. So the, the site is subject to MEPA review because it is in an ACEC, which is an area of critical environmental concern, ACEC, and it requires a mass highway access permit, which is a state permit. Those two, those two things trigger a MEPA review, and MEPA stands for Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act. Sorry, I'm trying to, I say the acronyms like they, like everybody knows what I'm talking about. So that process, we, we had a MEPA certificate three years ago in 2020 for the earth removal operation. We have requested, we have submit, submitted the revised plan to MEPA and requested a, and filed a notice of project change for that, and that is under review. We expect a decision on that at the end of next week, I think, is their, is their, their current timeframe. After that is complete, Mass DOT will begin review of the submitted mass, mass highway curb cut application, which we have submitted. So Mass DOT has indicated that they want to wait until after the notice of project change and MEPA process is over. So we expect that to happen beginning the end of next week or the, or the fall, in, in two weeks, that, that process will commence. And that's done completely at the state level with the, with the DOT. And then also as a follow-up to the conservation commission process, this site, the work on the westerly side of the site involves work within the buffer zone to the, to the wetland system, which is primarily off-site, but some of it is, is on the, is on the subject property. Almost all of that work has been done per the old order. We are modifying a few of the stormwater inlets into that detention basin that exists along that entire westerly property line, and I think one of those outlets, it's kind of hard to see, but one of those outlets right in here will require a little bit of additional work that was not shown in the approved plan that Conservation Commission approved. So we have asked them, filed this plan with them, and asked them for a minor modification. So we have asked them, filed this plan with them and asked them for a minor modification to the order of conditions that was, that was issued. We expect that to be on, well, we, it will be on March 1st. So all of those things are, are in process. So I just wanted to give you that overview and I'll leave it at that and happy to take any questions.
Very good. Excuse me. I will, I will ask about the, your, your meeting with the sewer commission.
Oh, yeah.
Are you finished with that?
We are finished with that. And I didn't go to that. So do you want to give an update on that, Danny? I, I didn't attend that. We, we did that about a month ago, I think.
Just one quick clarification because he was on vacation. There was 20 white pines planted, not 10.
Sorry.
So everything with the sewer department is good in the sense that, you know, we're okay to do what we want to do. We're just going back and forth on counts for flow rates, that type of thing. But there's really no arguing back and forth. It just comes down to that was the last discussion that we had and I just said if we run, you know, it was more conversation about the MDC trap, single trap because of the amount of bathrooms, you know, how we're going to tie that into the sewer line, all that type of stuff. So everything happens once you pull the building permit or go to pull the building permit. Then I would pull it, change the use with them going from residential, which is where the house is, to now a commercial property. So I file that with them. But then I have to cut a check to do that change, which I'm not going to do until I'm ready to pull the building permit. So it really just comes out of that's more clerical, but everything as far as, you know, what's going to happen is, is good with them.
Okay, very good. And Dan Proctor?
I'm sorry, Dan Proctor, 1529 MSF.
So how many meetings have you had with the sewer commission? I watched one and I think there might've been two since we last met?
Yeah, we only had one meeting with them.
You've only had one?
That's correct, yep.
Okay. Yeah, so I looked through the minutes and it, and it is recorded in our minutes that I, that I had ask a question about the floor drains for vehicle accessible garage bays. And I, I think I've asked before the meeting and I don't think we've gotten back from our building inspector on that, have we?
We have not.
So, so at that sewer meeting, that was one of the biggest, you know, concerns, questions, what have you. And they said that they would like to see floor drains in every unit. So there will be 10 floor drains all joining to that one MDC trap.
Well, that's, that's all well and good, but I don't think that, I don't think, that building code, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I believe that, that commercial buildings with garage bays need to have floor drains and grease interceptors.
Yeah, but I think it's, I don't think it, well, I don't know, but I think what the applicant is saying is the sewer commission, he's putting the floor drains in, the sewer commission, the, the conversation is whether it's a single MDC trap that the floor drains connect to or if they would each need an individual MDC trap within the building.
Oh, was that your understanding?
That's correct. Because we showed one MDC trap, but then the discussion was whether we're going to just have floor drains in some units or all of them. And Mr. McDonald was pretty adamant about he wanted to see one in every bay, every potential bay.
Again, I think it's building code that it requires.
If you can have, if the, if you have vehicles in there.
If you have vehicular access. It's a construction, it's a contractor's garage, so there's no doubt if you have the ability to get a vehicle in there, and this is exactly what was brought up at the sewer commission meeting, if you can get a vehicle in there, you are going to get your vehicle in there.
But I think that's a personal interpretation, not the way the code reads. Because if you look at a self-storage unit, you can get a vehicle in there, but they don't require them to have floor drains because most of them prohibit the storage of vehicles. So I, I understand what you're saying, but I don't think that's the code. I think the idea is that based on the use, rather than policing whether people pull the vehicles in or not, they're looking for floor drains in every unit to, to avoid that situation.
That was my understanding.
And we agreed to that.
Okay, but, but again, I guess, because this is, this is a public hearing for stormwater and site plan?
Correct.
So I don't think that we can, we can considerably approve a site plan review for one MDC trap if in fact they require 10 and they're going to have, all have to have access and be located and have setbacks and be plumbed and...
I think that similar to when the board approved the residential project on, at 711 Mass Ave, this came up and same thing with the Bright Farms project. The question is for, as far as site plan goes, whether or not they have access to sewer. And the final design and bits and pieces of sewer is the industry of the sewer commission. And so as long as the installation of those parts of the infrastructure don't alter the approved site plan, whether it's grades or impact the installation of stormwater facilities or other things that you're approving the design of, the board can approve the project and those bits are, I mean, the sewer commission is not going to sign off on a building permit until those are satisfied. And as long as that final site plan with those satisfactions matches the final site plan that this board issued, whether there's one MDC trap in front of the building or 10 individual ones is, is, I don't want to say irrelevant, but doesn't change what this board has approved. Because the, the way that you move through the site, the way that emergency services get there, the snow storage, all of that is going to be the same.
Yeah, what I wanted to just add is, in this case, the sewer comes from right down the, I don't have it on this plan, but it comes down and then we have a manhole out in the front. There's no other, other than the water, there's no other utility out here. So I mean, i- if the sewer commission and the DPW director told us they wanted to have 10 MDC traps, there's absolutely no, no issue, there's no physical limitation to that. We wouldn't have to modify any of the site because we have a lot of area with which to do that. I don't think we, so the applicant runs it up, owns and operates a car wash, a two-bay, a two-bay car wash in town. And the water usage there is significant, you know, thousands of gallons a day. And both of those bays are connected to one MDC, one MDC trap. So I mean, the, we're catching, you know, the, the water that we'd be catching in those bays would be, you know, just practically speaking, far less than that. So I mean, there's, you can kind of think of it that way. There's, you know, the, you know, we believe that one MDC trap will be more than adequate for all of those, but if they decide they want two, like if they decide they want to have five bays connected to one and five bays connected to the other, there's, there's no reason why we can't accommodate that on the site.
Totally understood. I think, I guess, I guess my main focus was about the floor drains.
Yeah, and it...
I think it might be building code, but I'm not sure.
It, it could be, but even if it wasn't, the sewer commission sort of said they wanted it and then the applicant has agreed to it. So we obviously will comply with building code. We won't expect to get a permit if we propose something that doesn't, doesn't comply.
I did have a question about the contractor's building because the rendering shows the doors on one side and the floor plan shows the doors on the other side. And I know, so it's a question, and I know that the abutter who has been attending brought this to my attention.
Oh, you mean side of the buil, side of the building?
Yeah, so on your rendering, you're showing the garage doors facing the parking area and on the floor plan it shows them facing the bins.
The floor plan, the floor plan is incorrect.
Okay.
So the, the bay doors are on this side, on the westerly side of the property. There's one large bay door here as well. And there's one residential size, like a, like a, an eight-foot wide door right here for the mechanical portion on the back. Other than that, one door on this, on the easterly side, all of the doors will just be residential person doors.
Person doors.
So we'll just have 10, you know, 10 regular old three-foot swing doors for, for, you know, access, pedestrian access, and then just one smaller garage door, nothing like the ones on the front. Just to get, it, that's where the HVAC systems will be and the, you know, the water meters and all that stuff, so.
Okay, very good. Do you have anything, was going to go to the public comment?
Yeah, I don't have anything to ask Tim.
Mr. Willsmer, do you have anything before we go to public comment?
No, I, I liked a lot of what we saw there and I think we should be good with a public comment.
Very good, thank you. So we do have, is this one or two?
This was the original. This was read at the last meeting.
Okay, so we've already heard that.
This has come in since.
This has come in since, from Erskine?
Yes.
Are they in attendance?
They are.
Would you like me to read this or would you like to read it or how would you like to proceed?
Well, is that a sketch that I had?
Yes.
I thought it over.
Okay, public comment, please, please address us.
This past week and we kind of went over the landscaping and stuff and she, you know, I noted the areas of concern, the one-two-threes.
Okay.
Yep.
Very good. And was there anything that was, that was misspoken or did they, did they speak entirely accurate?
Pretty good with that, yeah. The arborvitae's are going to be five feet, which is my height. And that's a little small for me, but I mean, I'm 70, by the time they big them, hello? I might pass away.
Might be a little smaller too.
Uh-huh.
Might be a little smaller too.
Yeah.
My mother's a little smaller.
That is a little, little bit, yeah. I'm a little concerned about, you know, the size of the, the plantings.
Okay, so, so the attached comments that you submitted, they have been addressed?
Yeah, pretty much.
And, and do you have anything further?
There was another thing I had a concern about, the lighting.
Of course.
Okay.
The lighting, that's shown on the landscape plan that we're looking at currently.
Yeah, it was on the landscape plan.
I think?
Just kind of look at that.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
It feels like we're wondering about, are Dixie, um, don't they have a thing that's still, still going to be 10 feet off the ground at the end of the, end of the building? Is that what, okay, so they'd be 10 feet from the ground, at the very peak of the block, not a deep tunnel, right? Do they want to be two towards us or four where we go, but they'd be like...
Yeah, I think it's like, yeah, I think it's called like, yeah, that's like over the man doors. But most of, you know.
What would they like?
No, like that, but flip going the other way so that it's not shining down. So that would be blocking the door, you know, that type of thing. So that would be like basically residential lighting. And then they would be, be wall mounted over the garage doors, which are pretty similar to that light right there, but facing down.
For all of the doors, yes? Oh, that's on either side, so the garage door, you go, then you go over there, doors, man doors, and then you let them inside the door.
I hope we can hear this on the internet.
So just to confirm what I'm hearing off microphone, the lights on the building at the corners will be at 10 feet, which is lower than the pole lights in the parking lot and are there for security purposes at night. And then on each of the person doors on the abutter's side of the building, you'll have a down-facing light at the top of the door opening in order to provide for someone to access.
I mean typically, those doors...
It'll be, it'll be like an eight-and-a-half-foot-high light.
Yeah, or less, those doors are six-six, so they'll probably be at like seven feet.
Okay.
Yep.
So it would be 10, like seven-foot-high.
Right across.
10 across, and then it'd be the 10-foot-high at each corner, just one in each corner, not like all the way across.
That's correct.
And per the, the town's bylaws, they'll be dark sky compliant with the down-facing cutoffs?
That's correct, exactly, yep. Every one of them.
The only ones are like above the windows.
It shows lights above all the windows.
But this is the front building. She's talking about the backside of this building.
Okay.
So she's...
There's one here too, which is on the backside of that.
Which is a pole. That's a pole.
No, that's not.
But that'll be at 10 feet.
Okay, but they're not shown on that.
They're not shown on this.
But they needn't show on this.
Correct. And this is a...
10 quarters.
But is it going to be artistic only or is it going to actually be on the building?
I mean, that's a question that you can certainly...
Sure, I mean, so speaking of, of the renderings versus the location of the lights, we don't see the corner lights that are shown on the plan on the rendering, which is not a big deal, but we do see additional lights that are shown on the rendering, but not on the plan.
On the commercial building, there's goose neck lighting over each of the...
Yeah, just over the windows.
Each of the windows.
I don't know if, if that's just an artist.
Yeah, exactly. I apologize for the accuracy of that, but that's just because...
Personal interpretation.
Right. It's amazing how like the Morton people want you to buy a very expensive building, but then you ask for a picture of the building that you're buying and they can't come up with one. So I apologize for that.
They come up with one much more expensive than what you're buying.
With all the options that we don't want.
No, we don't. Just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
Okay, so the abutters seem to be happy. We've seemed to have lost at least one group of abutters. Have, have we heard from the other ones, yea or nay?
No, I, I think they're Erks, they're the only ones who have been following along. The last, last meeting you had additional family with you, is that correct?
It wa, it wasn't a separate abutter, they were all together.
Okay, okay. I, I think there wasn't a abutter here, but I don't think he was, I think he was just curious about what the, the final proposal looked like.
Okay. Anybody in the waiting room, anybody else?
I haven't seen anybody in the waiting room. Okay, just make sure, nope, no one there.
So Mr. Willsmer, do you have any further additional?
Um, no, I'm, I'm happy to see how, you know, there's cooperation with the abutters and trying to come to, uh, something that's better for everybody. Just, you know, the, the minor graphic design and lining up between the two, I think it all looks pretty good.
Very good, thank you. Mrs. Reed?
I don't have anything additional.
Nothing, okay. So are there any outstanding issues that we should wait to be resolved, that we should hold off?
I have two, two additional things that I'd like to bring up, but I don't want to interrupt you.
Please do, he can think about it.
One of the preliminary comments that we have received from MEPA, again, Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act group, is that we expect them to issue a comment on their decision relative to parking. They, they inquired us, why do you have so much parking? And we said, well, you should ask the planning board. Uh, no, no, we didn't, we didn't throw you under the bus. But basically, we, we made it clear to them that the parking we laid out was per the, the bylaw parking requirements. But I wanted to ask, we do believe there is excess parking, particularly for, particularly for the contractor use. I've lost my ability to, to use my...
Larger building, I assume?
Yeah, the larger building, it's not working. So I wanted to ask, you know, in certain communities, we have proposed where we think that the parking is in excess, the part, the actual parking required is in excess of what will, will be required for the proposed use. We've asked the planning board to approve the overall parking area, but allow a few spaces to remain designated as, as parking areas if they're needed to be paved, but to not pave them right now. So my, my, and I'm just asking this question, I don't know if you've had any precedence for this in town or if your bylaw even allows it. But what I'd like to propose, and I'm going to go over and point so I can show you. I'd like to propose to the board that we designate those on the site plan as basically future parking areas. We structured, the, the decision could be structured that no, that those areas cannot be used for anything other than future parking in the, in the event that we needed it and that we would just hold those areas, we, we would keep them as green space until such time as, as it was deemed necessary to have the, to have those parking areas. We would make no other modifications to the plans. All the stormwater infrastructure would remain the same, be able to accommodate those if in the, if, if down the road we have a parking need. But it would allow us to respond to a comment that we received from MEPA. So it's not something that we feel very adamant about, but if, if you had a inclination to see a little bit less paving on the site, the applicant would be willing to, to do that kind of approach and it might, it, it might be a win-win for everybody. It kind of softens the site and it might, might allow us to be responsive to a, to a MEPA comment.
So you would carry the curb line from where it is across the back of the parking area and leave it as if it were part...
and leave it as if it were part of that landscape island in both instances?
I, I don't even think we have curbs there. I think we're sheet-flowing those sites. So I really think it's fairly easy to do.
I mean, even, even adding the curb isn't...
Yeah.
...difficult.
But I think in this case, you could literally just, I mean, you could actually prep it as gravel, and then just... You, you could actually prep it as gravel, and then just, uh, loam over the top of it, and if you needed it, you could scrape the loam off and just pave it.
Durable dustless, durable and dustless.
We could do a durable and dustless surface, too. We could just make it gravel.
Um, I'm pretty sure that qualifies.
Yeah, I, you know, I was, I'm, I'm trying to get creative because I'm sure not having parking in those areas would be a benefit to the abutters on both sides.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think our bylaw allows us to wipe it away.
Right, I would agree there, yeah.
I think that it, certainly, the planning board has the latitude to phase projects.
Mm-hmm.
And if Phase One didn't include those two parking areas, and Phase Two did, by constructing Phase One, you memorialize your permit, and it's active and moving forward. And in the event that something happened where that parking was needed, uh, you could even have three phases where...
Do one and...
One is Phase Two, and one is Phase Three. Um, the phases could be activated by, uh, action of the planning board in response to a demonstrated need of some manner. Uh, and that way, they're approving the full complement of parking to be constructed as is necessary per demand. Uh, I, I mean, I'm, this is really, I'm spitballing here as we, as we talk, but, I mean, I think that gives you a response to MEPA. If, you know, prepping it with gravel and, and covering it with loam and seed, that's, that, that, I mean, that would kinda...
With gravel, that would still, that would still be responsive, we think, so...
Yeah, yeah. Um, I mean, I think, I kinda hate gravel like that, though, because it just poses a problem for kicking up and moving and needing to be replaced,
Yeah, I kinda agree.
And it goes through, and you don't really wanna mow it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, to me, I, I think loam and seed is the way to leave it.
Yeah.
It, it's more natural, limits the stormwater, it, it, I mean, it has a lot of net positives. And you don't get somebody who leaves a piece of equipment on that gravel pad, 'cause, oh, it's gravel, it's, you know, supposed to be there. But, I mean, I don't get to decide that, it's kinda up to the board, but I think, I think we can craft something in a way that would work. We would probably need a phasing plan from, from you in order to do that.
We could modify the plan.
I know that's not super complicated, but it just drags everything out a little bit. So, yeah, I, I, I think that there's a way to do that.
I mean, one way we could, we could just, we could, well, I have, I know you, I haven't heard the board speak, but provided that the board is, is, sees an avenue for that, we could just let them approve the plan, and if, we could see what the comment is, and then come back and ask for a modification. I mean, that's one way to do it. But, I'll happy to let you guys speak further on that. I would be interested in hearing if, if you folks have any...
Sure.
Disposition one way or the other.
I, I, I appreciate that you agreed with the interpretation, and that you went ahead and asked anyway. That's good. Um, and I like the creativity, very good. Um, the phases, I'm not sure how we would structure such a thing as far as Phase Two kicks in, Phase Three kicks in, but I like the creativity, and we can continue to think about it. Um, but it did bring up something to my mind about, um, like curb stops, especially at the sediment four bay, sediment four bays, where, where the nose-in parking, and then also the sediment four bay two. Sediment four bay one and three, to the north and south respectively, and then two to the, to the, to the west. There's no curbing proposed where the grading drops down for the basin.
Yeah.
Either that, or maybe a guardrail, or...
Yeah, maybe something like that. I just think that curb stops are kinda, we have in front of the building to protect the building, because we have things like what happened down at the Apple Store, and...
Right, well, they're just horrible for plowing, right?
And they're horrible for plowing, so that's why we're trying to minimize them on site, but, um, but...
Yeah, a wooden guardrail would work fine there, and would, would fit right into that, that site.
Which is just something that popped in because of that, looking at these, these specific areas, but, uh, um, I mean, what are your parking situation right now? Are you, you're over the requirement? Are our, are our, is the wheels...
Yeah, not by much, though, I don't think.
The wheels go round and round on the bus, but...
Yeah. I thi, I think that the, well, I have to, I can't see the plan, so hold on.
Um, just while we're getting things done here, uh, just for my indication, since I can't see there, could I just get like the kinda number ranges?
Sure.
Sponsored number.
Yeah, so, uh, that's, I'll, I'll say that right now. So, the contractor building, the large building in the back, um, the bylaw requires, uh, one space per three hundred square feet for a total of forty-eight spaces, um, plus one space per employee. So we're assuming two employees times ten units is twenty additional spaces. And then, um, and then we also included some, if we wanted, you know, we kinda called those equipment storage parking spaces just 'cause the, the storage, uh, um, fence, uh, in those areas. So we have a total of seventy-eight spaces required, and we're providing seventy-nine. So we're pretty much right at your bylaw there. And then, uh, the office building and the personal improvement building, so again, the office building is the fifty-four-hundred-square-foot building. Ones, your bylaw requires one space per three hundred square feet, so there's a total of eighteen spaces required. We are proposing twenty-five there, so we have a few extra. So that is one way we could be responsive to, to MEPA. And then, um, we have the personal improvement building, which, uh, again, is one, required one space per two hundred and fifty square feet. It's five thousand square feet, so there's a total of twenty spaces required, and we have twenty-three shown. So there's, there's three, um, a net of three. Um, so, yeah, we have a few extras, but not significant, maybe ten extra spaces on the site, if I count right. So, eleven, maybe. So, anyway.
This, the, the smaller parking space near the dumpster pad is ten spaces.
Yeah.
So you could lose that and still be in, in your required parking?
We could. We, we think we, 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 we think we need the parking for the, for the front office buildings. We, we don't think that's overboard. We actually think that that, you know, um, that, that that could be utilized. It's the, it's the, it's the back building, the contractor building, that we think is, is significantly more than we need, so...
Well, since it is, uh, one site, and they are three uses on the same site, I mean, you, the, in my opinion, this is kind of a mixing and matching. There's three uses on one site. So these three uses that you've decided to go and, 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 and have permitted here were intended to have one use per site, which is why the contractor yard has such a high requirement of spaces. Because it didn't necessarily include these additional uses.
Right, right.
But they didn't include some sort of a office space, but, um...
That actually segues in a little bit to the second comment that I wanted to make.
Good.
Um, you, you can see on the plan here, we, we have drawn a property line.
Yep.
We are intending to cut this, this building off through the A and R process, um, after this is done. Um, I did wanna mention that, 'cause, um, I didn't mention it in the opening hearing. So, um, that's one of the reasons why we did, we, yes, we have a mixed use. Um, yeah, we probably could've shared some parking, maybe. I think your bylaw has some provisions for that. Uh, but we really did wanna treat them separately, um, because we wanted to give this its own sort of identity. We wanted to give this its own identity. Granted, it shares the entrance, uh, but we, we wanted to give this its own identity. So, um, you know, um, I, I did wanna mention that. So, you know, like I said, I, I think the parking for these two uses is about right. Um, I just think that we're over by probably a factor of two on the, on the back building, is from, from our calculation, so... I don't wanna get too far afield on that either, I, you know, but...
I mean, I think that the, the phasing we could, we could figure out if the board was so inclined. On the front building, with buildings, if there's going to be a separation, and you intend to retain the cross-access...
We do.
It's in everyone's best interest that there be an easement agreement?
Absolutely, yeah. We'd have that on the A and R plan, yeah. Absolutely.
I just...
Oh, yeah.
Not that I, not that I think that you wouldn't do it, I just don't, I think it's important that it be said.
Yeah, there'd be an access easement for the benefit of this lot across this lot here, and there would be an access easement for the benefit of this lot across this...
Absolutely, yeah.
So that everybody has access to both entrances. That does the whole point of this, to have, you know... Not that the fire department's gonna look to see if there's an easement first, but, you know, we don't want, we don't want this guy, we don't want this guy to put a, put a fence across here.
Well, you was gonna say, you're not gonna prevent the users from crossing. And when someone decides to put up a triangle gate, it just gets...
That's, that's right. We want the legal means to prevent that from happening. That's not what we want on the site. We want it to flow like a, you know, like a...
Yeah, and it just protects both parties, and then they don't come to the town and say, this person did this, and that person did that, and why'd you let them do that?
Yeah, yeah. But anyway, I wanted to mention that because it segued into what Mr. Allison said about, you know, the way the bylaw's written with mixed use, and, um, anyway. I, I guess, I, I guess I'm inclined to kick that down the road, and if, we'll see what the, um, what the comment is by the, um, by the, uh, MEPA folks. They've just given us an indication. I don't even know. They said that they might recommend...
Quite frankly...
Recommendation is not a requirement, so I...
Yeah, you could also go to, i- i- if the, if MEPA makes the comment, you could kick the can down the road in a couple of different ways. You go to the zoning board and ask for dimensional relief by special permit on the required parking, and then file a modification. You come to the board and file a de minimis change for a phasing plan, and the board can negotiate with you at that point.
It seems like that's probably the best way to, way to go.
Yeah.
Because, again, we're, we're not opposed to keep showing them on the plan, and, and, you know, keeping them, keeping them planned for. Like, it's, you know, we, we, not commonly, but we routinely do this in, in other developments we've worked on. So I, I think we just, we just run with it as, as is, and, and we, uh, if, you, you will see what happens with, uh, with the MEPA review, and we'll make a call on it after that.
When is the MEPA review expected to be finished?
We expect it end of next week, so I think their comment period, uh, their, the decisions, I think, are due next Friday. Is that right? Comments, comments due tomorrow, comment period ends tomorrow, and then the decision's by next Friday, so...
Any reason we couldn't continue till after that? Are you looking to close this tonight?
Well, I'd love to close it, unless you think there's, uh, a real compelling reason to keep that open. I mean, we're, like I said, we're, we're willing to roll with, with that. I, I just wanted to bring it up, um, and see if there would be any appetite for it. It sounds like there is, but I think we're willing to do it after the, uh, as an amendment or as a different process.
I'm, I'm just gonna put it out there right now, is if you do propose to have a phasing plan, we need to have that plan in hand.
Yeah, I think what he's saying is, close it and wait, close MEPA up and come as an amendment.
Just to prove, just to prove as-is, or do whatever you, action you would as-is. And then if, um, if we, uh, feel like we wanna come back at a phasing plan, we'll just, we'll submit a phasing plan with an app, application to modify the, uh, site plan approval.
Okay.
And I'll just remind you that even, it, the board historically has closed the hearing and waited to deliberate for a draft, a, a draft decision.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So, so at the next meeting, so that, even if they close the hearing tonight...
Yeah, you won't, yeah.
The next meeting would be when they were, would be voting with the draft decision in hand and deliberating.
Yeah, that's fine.
And, and not that that should change what you're saying, just process-wise.
Yeah, I, I, I think, um, as long as the board feels like they have enough information in the record to make a decision, I, I think we're, um, we're fine closing. And we would like to close, if, if you feel like you have enough information, without the phasing plan.
I have no doubt that you would like to close tonight. Didn't even need to ask the question, but, but, um, I guess I, I asked the question because, to ask it would be a, a disconvenience, inconvenience, or just, in general, I'm not sure that I feel confident closing it before getting to MEPA, simply because the AC/EC was brought up in the initial earth removal and, and the initial stormwater, and it wasn't really applicable to that project, but it is to this project.
Uh, my recollection, and I, again, wasn't prepared to talk about AC/EC, was that it was a, a small portion of the site that was clipped by the AC/EC and not a significant portion. It's the whole, oh, is the whole site in it?
AC/EC goes from Townsend Harbor down to Mass Ave.
Oh, okay, I'm, I'm thinking of the wa, the, the aquifer.
On the opposite, on the southerly side of Mass Ave is no, is not AC/EC, and on the westerly side of...
Townsend Harbor.
Townsend Harbor is not AC/EC, so it's just right on that bottom corner.
Well, you do, you do have that bit of, bit of swamp that sticks, sticks down in there.
Right. So, I mean, that might be what you're remembering. You know, we probably made a representation that we're about as far away from the center of the polygon as you can possibly be, but be that as it may, we're still within it, so... I, I guess I just, as a rule, if, if you've, if you feel like you have enough information, we're willing to take the risk on, based on what we've, the discussion we had with the, uh, the MEPA folks, we don't feel that, we don't believe there's gonna be many, you know, anything coming down there, down the, the pipe that's, that's gonna really impact the site plan. And like I said, if there is, it's kind of our risk. If, um, if you were to close the hearing, we'd have to ask you to either reopen it, or we'd have to file for an amendment if there's something that we'd have to clean up, but, um, I don't see that as a high, a highly likely scenario at the moment, but...
So amendment being de minimis change, is that, is...
It could be de minimis, it could be, it could be a full amendment.
Or it could be a full, yeah, yeah. We're, we're willing to take, I guess what I'm telling you is, the applicant's willing to take that risk this evening. If, if your board feels like you have enough information to...
With the de minimis change, it's up to the board to determine that it is de minimis.
We might ask you for a de minimis change, and you might say, no, we wanna re-advertise the public hearing, so I guess...
You might ask us for six de minimis changes.
That's right, you know, and then you can disagree.
So, I guess, I guess, given past experiences, uh, when there's an approval granted by the planning board and something changes that, that really should come back to the planning board, sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't. I'm not sure what, uh, ability to make modifications, given new information we have, if we close the hearing, and I'm pretty sure you don't.
You, you don't. I mean, you, you could reopen the hearing, which could require re-advertising, or they could, you could wrap up the hearing, and they could file for an amendment. And, you know, likely, depending on the change, you'd require at least, again, re-advertising.
Well, I mean, and if we did, if we just continued it to the next meeting, then we could close at the next meeting, whether, or just continue on with some revisions.
Well, and, and...
Reopening it.
So, it, it certainly seems that the abutters' concerns have been heard and to their statement been addressed in a satisfactory way that they, that, to what they've requested, um, with some caveats and concerns, but that's kind of the nature of any sort of development. Um, the board certainly seems to not be retaining issues from their perspective that don't rely on other approval processes, whether it's the sewer commission or MEPA. Uh, so if that's the case, I can prepare a draft decision. There's, again, the applicant has stated their, their desire to close the hearing. That's the board's prerogative, whether they wish to do that. Uh, and whether you continue the hearing or not, we can come to the next meeting with a draft decision.
Exactly. So we could, we could close the hearing next meeting and have the draft decision ready to sign.
Correct.
And it would be no time lost.
Correct.
The applicant agrees to that approach, if, if you...
I would certainly prefer that, and I'm, and it's even a win-win, because it doesn't change the timeline.
Yeah.
Um, I did just happen to notice one thing about the handicap parking. So for the 79 spaces for the contractor's garage, I believe you'd be required three handicap spots?
For that use? We'll look at that.
And, and I mean, I'm just looking because you've got two, two and one.
Yeah.
For a total, that's probably, I mean, I'm sure that's adequate, but if you take off the one with the extra, just as, as an additional note to, um, make sure you all the Ts are crossed.
Okay.
Anything else?
And we really should put the, I mean, thinking about it as I was standing here, we really should put the updated landscaping plan on record, too. You don't have a copy of that, so.
Yes.
You know, I, it, provided we have a draft, we go that route.
Yeah, and, and I mean, it certainly seems like there aren't any significant conditions outside of the, um, the standard conditions that the board has been placing. You know, there's a, a few things in here that I can see myself adding that the applicant has already agreed to, and just putting them in the decision would be a way to memorialize that and avoid
Yep.
confusion in the future.
Yep.
But.
We can clean up the Graves' comment, the remaining Graves' comment, too. Okay.
Yeah, so I think that's a, a win-win. Is there any additional public comment? Anybody online? Okay, I guess then I would ask for a motion to continue to a date.
Correct. Twenty-seven February.
Uh, I would motion to continue, um, the public hearing on thirteen twenty-five Massachusetts Avenue to our next meeting, which is February twenty-seventh, six oh five PM.
Very good. Is there a second?
Yeah, I second that.
Very good. Any further discussion about continuance? Hearing none. All in favor by roll call. Mr. Willsmer?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Decision. So our next order of business. Yeah, just.
Yep. I'm just putting it all together.
Definitely do it. Um, so our next order of business is a decision for four seven five Lemmonster Shirley Road. Review and endorsement?
Uh, so you've received this decision? But we don't have enough people to endorse it, so you two can sign it. This is for the, uh, changes that were brought forward at the last meeting, uh, relative to the project at Lemmonster Shirley Road. They included the signage plan.
That was the sixth de minimis change?
No, that was actually a modification.
Okay.
It was a fully advertised modification.
Oh, okay. I stand corrected.
So if you would like to sign it, you, you both can.
We're gonna have to come in and sign the Mylar, too, right? For the A and R?
Well, no, you guys can sign it here.
I, I didn't realize.
I just, I didn't wanna take up meeting time since I wasn't gonna hand it to them.
Sure. Okay, um.
So if you wanna sign that at the end, you can do that, too.
Okay, why don't we do that?
I don't think, there's, there's no significant alteration. There's no conditions or anything, so.
Okay. Any update on Pond View?
Uh, yeah, they're going to hack. So the zoning board voted that they don't have the authority to, um, waive the legislative action of town meeting in reference to the expansion of the sewer district, nor do they have so to do for the water district. So the two attorneys have negotiated an agreement to let Hack decide. Uh, Hack is the Housing Action Committee. Uh, they're a quasi-judicial body that oversees comprehensive permits, so they were gonna go and make their arguments in front of them about whether or not the zoning board in the comprehensive permit statute and regulations was ever envisioned to be expanding water and sewer districts exclusive of the legislative bodies that govern them.
Okay, so it was a mutual agreement?
It was a mutual agreement that they proceed in the way they're going to. So they're gonna go to Hack to argue that specific point. And should Hack agree with the town, they would have, uh, a fixed number of days, I think it's a hundred and twenty, to come back and let the applicant alter his plans in order to, so they've signed a mutual agreement that they'd have a hundred and twenty days to execute the comp permit after all of the argument about that is resolved if the town wins. If the applicant wins, they would come back and the zoning board would have ninety days to complete their review of the, the comp permit.
Ninety days from the decision, because I heard, I understood it would be over in March?
Yeah, so it would be ninety days from, from the final outcome of Hack Court, whomever, wherever they end up going.
Yeah, I, I guess, I guess that begs the question, can, can the zoning board are required to approve it within ninety days? Or are required?
Per that agreement.
To make a decision?
Yes, the applicant has granted them ninety days, a ninety-day clock after the disposition of the water and sewer arguments with which to adjudicate the permit.
So adjudicate the permit, does that mean make a decision or approve?
Make a decision.
So they could still, after the ninety days, disapprove?
Correct. Yeah, if, if there were some other matter within their purview that they felt added up to disapproval.
I guess that kinda seems like a somewhat of a win. I mean, at least.
Yeah, I mean, it, it was, it was gonna go that way, one way or the other, and I think what it does is it saves the town and the applicant a significant amount of.
Litigation fees.
Uh, I was gonna say design and review fees and energy to get to the heart of the litigation issue.
Whoa.
And then to come back and go through the, the pain process of that, and then, you know, in theory, there's probably additional litigation afterwards.
Of course, but, I mean, so the zoning board still has only the one thousand dollar initial application fee, correct?
Uh, I'm, I.
Actually, that's outside of our purview.
Yeah, I, I, they, they did negotiate a, a different fee that wasn't the full amount, and I don't know if they've received it or not.
Neither here nor there. It's not really our.
Correct.
Our wheelhouse. But I thank you very much for the, uh, update, and, and that's it?
That is it there.
Are there any questions on the comprehensive permit application update?
None.
Mr. Willsmer? No?
No, no question.
Very good. So item seven on our agenda is, uh, the eight, I'm sorry, is, uh, A is solar bylaw, and I'm told that this is for a future discussion?
Yes, the, uh, resident who had come and brought this to the board back around the turn of the year contacted me today and said, oh, it really looks like you've got a busy agenda. How about I come? And we set aside a separate agenda item at the next meeting, so. Excuse me, I volunteered to do that, and so she will, she has a, a short presentation and really wants to dig in with the board, uh, and I think, uh, hopefully, Mr. Willsmer will be able to attend, and I, and Mr. Brenner should be back at that point, and I think the board will have a much better discussion, uh, together than, uh, missing a member and, and uh, having a, a member on Zoom, although that gets really messy sometimes when you're talking about specific things.
Yep.
Uh, for the next one, the zoning for MBTA communities. Uh, at the meeting that wasn't, I was hoping to talk through the, um, action plan as was intended to be submitted. But at this point, it has been submitted because it was due on the thirty-first, and I don't like to miss deadlines if I can avoid it. So I, I can, it's, what I sent you is basically what was submitted. And it's, doesn't obligate us to anything, it's just outlining what, uh, we're potentially intending to do. I expect in the next few months, we will be, uh, visited by Karen Chapman from MRPC to start the public process and start to really dig into how, why, where the town is gonna start to, to drive this forward. D L T A, I don't think what they're looking for, uh, I didn't see any projects that are coming forward from the town. Uh, I will, again, defer to the board if there's something that you would like to address, um, but I'll leave it up to, to you folks.
So the D L T call for proposals, when, when does that open till?
It's kind of rolling.
Okay.
They were due last week or this week for the first round, but if you had a project and we put it in and they had money left, they would do it. They, they put multiple calls for proposal out every year.
Okay.
I don't know if Amanda has been, they often say, oh, we're still looking, we're still looking, we've got this money. They're always, they're trying to find stuff.
Yes.
Um, I think part of the issue is, uh, the governor's office and the legislature tend to give them a very narrow scope of what the money is supposed to be spent for, and then they don't get anything, and they kinda like, it creeps wider and wider what falls into what they've said, and by the end, they try to, they're just trying to spend it all.
Yeah.
So district local, local transportation?
Uh, nope, just district local technical assistance.
Technical assistance.
Uh, it's mostly housing-related currently, a, a lot of the MBTA stuff, but we already have a grant for that, so that would be the one thing I think we're currently working on that would go towards that, and we've got that covered at this point. We don't, we're not a, a housing choice community. I don't think the town wants to be a housing choice community. I know when Governor Baker introduced that, uh, I heard a lot of people booing and hissing around town, so uh, I think if, if the town were to bring that forward, it would be sort of nee. But you know, if you think of something, give me a call, I'm happy to, to shout it out with you and, uh, bounce it off Karen if there's, if, if there's something you think would work.
Well, how about, how about looking at, at revising our zoning to accommodate for three miles of sewer? Would that be something that would qualify? I'll look at that.
But, no, but the, this process, the master plan process, um, includes a, a zoning review.
Okay.
And, um, looking at where commercial expansion would make logical sense with limited impact.
We're kinda stuck with the expansion that is the underlying, but.
Well, yes, but, eh, so it, it's looking at a multitude, the, the master plan will look at a multitude of different things that will relate back to that specific thing, and should, I mean, we're, we're doing this other process. I don't wanna have parallel processes competing with one another.
Sounds good. And then the driveways and entrances, uh, are you ready to talk about anything specific that you come to mind, or?
I mean, I don't have anything specific. I know it's kind of been.
I think what I'm gonna do is just write something, and then you guys can react to it, because I think that's gonna have much more success.
Okay.
I agree.
Yeah, so I, we've been kicking this down the road, um, and partly because of, of low mem- low attendance at meetings, and partly because we weren't prepared. I, I hadn't been prepared, um, so, um, I think it does make sense for you to go ahead and put something together. I do understand that you, uh, you have other things to do, so.
But that's, that's okay. This is one of the things I have to do.
Very good. So I think the, the main stage tonight is our next item?
It is. Um, so there is a copy, here, you can, you can borrow my copies.
Okay, thank you.
We've received three responses to our request for RFP for the master plan.
Ooh, that one's fancy.
Don't get too excited about how fancy it is. It's a lot of resumes.
Oh, boy.
Like eighty-five pages of them. So the three bidders are J M Goldstein.
Goldson?
Goldson, sorry.
That's right.
Uh, the Weston and Sampson and over/under. Uh, which is a team, uh, made up of three different bidders, which would be over/under, um, RKG Associates and Inez Associates. Essentially, I think the board should interview all three. The proposals are wildly different. Not in content. They all are responsive bidders. They all have what I would class as a logical and, um, definitive timeline. They all address the engagement issues that the board has, uh, expressed as a significant portion of what they would like, um, but they all address the different elements of the master plan in a variety of ways, which, you know, and, and reading through some, I just wanted to bang my head on the desk because what was submitted was challenging to read through. Some felt very formulaic, and, and some just felt squishy. And I don't think that's necessarily reflective of the final product that they would produce. And I think it's hard to get a feel for the folks who are doing the work by the written word, and I think that scheduling, uh, interviews at the next meeting would be the way to go about this, to really nail down who, who the board would be interested in, in working with. We don't have the price proposals. And I will have to get you each a ranking sheet so that you can go through and rank them. But I think the interview is also part of that. So, um, again, I think any one of these groups would do the job and do it well. But I think it's important that the board feel invested in who they put forward as their choice. So my proposal would be schedule interviews at seven thirty, eight and eight thirty next week, and have the board try to work through their meeting agenda in an hour and a half, and then focus on, on those interviews.
We're gonna have a half, eh, excuse me, we're gonna have the presentation on the solar.
Correct.
We're gonna have, hopefully, the finalization of the public hearing.
Correct.
Uh, what else do we have?
That's it.
That's it.
At this point.
That's not bad.
Sounds reasonable.
Yeah.
And then you can, you know, minutes approval, committee reports, all of that, you can fill in that interceding space with. And honestly, if you have a forty-five minute meeting and you have to take a forty-five minute recess, you can certainly do that.
Okay.
I mean, if you'd prefer to try and compress it and do your meeting in an hour, you can do that. I just think that might be pushing it a little bit.
I'd rather err on the side of caution.
That was my, my feeling as well.
You agree?
I agree.
Okay. Mr. Willsmer, how, how do you feel about all that that's just been spoken?
Um, yeah, setting, uh, interviews for next week. I think the timeline's fine. Go for it.
Okay. Um, and another question for Mr. Willsmer, um, are you able to pick up a packet? Or are you comfortable looking at the digital material that's been emailed to you? As far as?
I've been doing fine with the emailed material, um, that I have here. Uh, assumedly, as, as long as it's in the same, you know, general setup, I, I shouldn't have any issues.
Yeah, and I mean, I have paper packets if anybody wants them.
Okay.
Sure.
Cause it does look like probably thirty or forty pages, double-sided. Anyway, I'm a lot, I, I like to have paper in my hand to look at and make notes. Just wanna make sure that all the members are adequately, uh, equipped. Okay, do we have anything, what, what else do we wanna talk about tonight?
That's, that's it.
That's it?
I was looking at, to see if, if anyone on the board has comments, after having reviewed them, I will take them, but uh, if you would like to reserve them for.
Well, I'm, I'm just gonna say, I, I'd never heard of Goldson. Um, I've, I've heard of, um, Weston and Sampson, and the, the. Um, I've, I've heard of Weston and Sampson and the, the other one, is that like a, um, um, a joint venture to?
It is.
And, and just to get bids or just in general or?
It, it seems that they have worked together before. Over, under appears to work very closely with Boston. They're, uh, what appears to be an urban design firm that is very space conscious. RKG is a large engineering firm and Inez Associates is an individual, uh, with maybe some employees who is, uh, a planner by trade and appears to focus on, on zoning and, and economic development.
Okay.
So it appears that they may, may have done some work together and thought that, um, going for projects like this would be something they're interested in, in doing.
All right. And, and I, in personal experience, I've seen some very interesting groups form that way.
Mm-hmm.
It was some, some typically good results, well, well-rounded results. Um, but that will be my homework for, um, between now and our next meeting. I guess that's all we have on that. So we're up to minutes approval.
That we are.
Have we had opportunity to review the minutes? I did, simply looking to make sure that I mentioned the grease traps last meeting. If anybody feels comfortable, um, that they can make a motion or if somebody needs more time, then that's fine too.
I can motion to approve them. Um. All right. I motion to approve the minutes from our meeting on January ninth. And also the minutes on January ninth for thirteen twenty-five Massachusetts Avenue. And again, on January ninth for four seven five Lemonster Shirley Road.
Excellent. Is there a second?
I second that.
Beautiful. Um, any further discussion on the minutes approval? Hearing none, all in favor by roll call vote, Mr. Willsmer?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Committee reports, open space. Um, we haven't, Open Space has met twice since, well, I don't think they met last time. There was a ten-minute video, but I don't think they had quorum. Uh, I wasn't able to make it the last meeting. The previous meeting, um, which I believe was ch, 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 early January, early to mid-January. Um, the focus of that meeting, uh, was around the potential of a public access on Lake Shirley through a parcel that's owned by the Parks or care and control of the parks. Um, there was considerable discussion at a Parks Commission meeting. And the representative from Parks Commission on Open Space, uh, seemed to have generated quite a following on that topic. So the, the meeting, uh, primarily was about, um, a, a, a portion, portion of land, uh, owned by the town. Care and control of the Parks Commission on Lake Shirley. It was on a, not a fire road, it was a public road, very small, um, very close to an intersection. Anyways, there was also, um, a discussion on a a deed research on the ownership for Lake Shirley. And from what I remember, that was fairly inconclusive. Do you have any info on that?
I don't. My understanding is that has always been an inconclusive search.
Yeah, it, it's been searched before. Um, and for whatever reason, it came up again, uh, with enough intensity to garner another, um, expenditure on lawyers, I suppose.
Is the, the town doing the research?
No. Um, you know what? I'm gonna have to follow back on, follow up on that next meeting. Because that was some time ago. I don't quite remember. But, but as you stated, it has been, uh, long, long, and long understood to be combination, uh, private and public. So regardless, neither here nor there, the, it was inconclusive, which is not to be unexpected. Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee. We have either not met or I have not been in attendance. I think that there was only one meeting since our last planning board meeting. Oh, we weren't able to get the second half of Mr. Jeffrey's presentation on that either because we were going to get that on the snow date meeting, which was our last meeting.
Correct.
So I'm, I'm really not sure what the status is on that. I know that we'd like to keep moving forward, but I'm pretty sure there's not going to be anything for a presentation at the town meeting. I can't imagine there would be.
I'd say I think there are some other things that are occupying Mr. Jeffrey's time right now.
Of course, of course. Mr. Investigator. Um, the Agricultural Commission. We have had one meeting since our last planning meeting. We have another meeting coming this Thursday night. Um, the, the last meeting of the Agricultural Commission primarily focused on the farmer's market, um, on the management. We had one of two market managers, uh, step down. The other, uh, current market manager has, um, expressed an interest to not necessarily step down, but, but, um, be a little bit more hands off. And they, they both done excellent, excellent work with us. Um, they've done very good by the, by the market. We don't seem to have a vegetable vendor. So if anybody in Lunenburg grows vegetables and would like to vend at the farmer's market, um, we would welcome it. I have reached out to numerous people numerous times and have had, um, very little, if any, positive response. So again, we're, we're in dire straits for a vegetable vendor at our farmer's market. I guess that's about it for the AgCon. Capital Planning Committee, is that Mr. Brenner?
I believe so.
Yes.
Okay. Economic Development Committee?
Also Mr. Brenner.
Stormwater Task Force?
That's me.
I was gonna say, I can give you economic development if you want.
Sure.
Uh, the Economic Development Committee, at its last meeting, met with representatives from the Chamber of Commerce to talk about One Stop. Is it One Stop? No, One Stop is mass development. Talk about, um, their efforts to, um, expand business in north central Massachusetts and to partner with communities. And sort of going over some of the things they do from micro lending to business connections to support, uh, from a technical perspective on business planning or otherwise in order to get in with, uh, traditional lenders. Uh, so all in all, it was a, a good meeting. I think there were some good things brought up. I think it was helpful for the committee to sort of connect with the chamber and see what they're doing and how they operate. I think it was good for the chamber to hear from the committee what, uh, what help they may be able to provide to the town. So, uh, we were able to get some good, um, back and forth going. And I think that there, uh, is a place for, for both groups to help each other going forward.
Super. Super. All right.
Great.
You can, you, the next three, I believe.
Yes. Stormwater Task Force, we met last month. I don't have my notes from it, but we mostly talked about budget, um, the DPW budget and how that relates to storm water and how much money is allocated from their budget. Um, we didn't get a super detailed, um, listing of it. So our next meeting, which I think is this week?
It's Thursday, yeah.
This Thursday. Um, hopefully DPW will have a more well-defined list of, um, where their budget allocates in relation to storm water. So.
Super. And, and also just to follow on, the DPW director has been in, in-house for a couple of months now?
Yeah, a little more than that.
So he's relatively new, so.
Yes.
Yeah, and that, that was part of the issue. You know, the previous DPW director had been working to sort of determine costs. Uh, and so as he started doing that, he left. And so the new DPW director at the last meeting presented, um, sort of a rough estimate of man costs or person costs for focusing on storm water. And what the, the committee asked for was, um, more detailed, uh, project costs. Uh, what projects are being done, what projects have been done, what are those costs? And how does that play with the costs of the person hours to sort of get a more robust picture? So that they can sort of figure out what a stormwater budget would look like if it were isolated in its own silo.
Exactly.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. And then I have MRPC. So we met on the ninth. Mostly they were talking about, um, the MRPC's budget and where, um, I suppose the, their growth in terms of cost is and, uh, employee costs and project costs. And, um, they spoke quite about, a bit about that. Um, let's see. We spoke about nominating, um, committee members at the next meeting. Then also we spoke about the open meeting law ending, possibly?
The?
The, the COVID emergency open meeting.
The hybrid meetings and all that kind of fun stuff.
I'm so excited.
Uh, sorry, misspoke. Um, so we spoke about that. Next meeting will still have a Zoom option. But then the meeting after in April will most likely be in person unless for some reason they decide to extend. Um, so that's MRPC, yep, MJTC. Um, we spoke about their focus on multilingual assistance, um, from MMPO and MRPC. Basically making, um, any kind of public transportation more accessible to people who don't speak English. So they've been working a lot on surveying different towns and areas to see what the major languages spoken there are. Um, and how they can incorporate that into any kind of literature on like buses or trains or, um, even like announcements on the train systems or on buses or, um, things like that. So, um, obviously they're doing surveys throughout different towns. And if anybody has concerns, they can always reach out to them. However, they also said that they haven't had any requests for translation since before 2019. So I think it's kind of like an ongoing thing that they're working on, but they're trying to revamp it. They're also having a train station open forum and it's this week on the sixteenth, Thursday at ten AM. There's a Zoom option for that. So I believe they're looking for input, um, for their train station projects that they're working on. So it is, uh, an open Zoom for anybody who wants to attend. That's on Thursday, the sixteenth at ten AM. And you can find all the info on their website. And that's it.
Thank you. So, so your participation there has been solely Zoom?
Yes.
So in, in my recollection, from my experience, when I was the laser, well, the, when I was on MJTC, I had brought that issue up about, they were giving us handouts that were four or five pages, but actually ended up being twenty or thirty pages because it had so many language translations.
Oh, okay.
And I made a comment one time about, this is ridiculous. Um, in my opinion, I guess, of course. But, um, you know, translation services is one thing, but to just make multiple copies in multiple languages of just general handouts, I thought was frivolous.
Right.
And, and in fact, there was, there was, um, there was another member of that group at that time. And I believe there might've been a representative from the DOT. And they were not English as first, they were English as second language. And, and they come up to me after the meeting and thanked me for having brought that up and, and the way I spoke about it because it, it's almost, it's almost, it's almost condescending to the people who come here and, and want to assimilate to this culture. But at the same time, we're promoting the lack of that by providing. And that was, that was my opinion and my comment, and, and I'm interested to see that they're picking that up.
Yeah, I think it's not necessarily an involvement within the meetings. It's more so on public transportation to make it easier for non-native English speakers.
That's what I understand.
Right, yeah. And it's, you know, it's a, it's a, it's an opinion.
Yep.
But.
It's a slightly different issue, but yeah, no, and, and, you know, it, of course, people using our transportation systems are not all citizens. They're.
Sure, people visiting or yes.
Visitors, right. Um, and yeah, exactly. So anyways, um, thank you for the committee reports. Mr. Willsmer, do you have any input at all to this point? I've been kind of leaving you in the lurch.
Uh, yeah, no, um, I haven't been on any committees. I don't, uh, have much to contribute, uh, at this point, unfortunately.
Very good. Okay, just making sure.
Your time is coming.
So director's items.
Uh, so the annual town meeting warrant is open. Uh, it will be open till the twentieth of March. So if there's anything that the board would like to put forward, uh, we should figure that out real, real quick.
Yeah, no, I would love to have been able to do something with our, um, shared driveways, driveways and entrances.
We may still be able to. Maybe I'll just hit it out of the park with my first try.
Well, there you go. I will, I will, I will look forward to that.
Uh, and then town caucus is on the twenty-seventh of March, which is a Monday, which if I'm not mistaken
Will stories correspond with us.
Conflict with our meeting.
It does.
Yep.
Uh, so.
Which is.
The board can do a couple of different things. You can move your meeting, you can say, damn the torpedoes and skip caucus. Um, it's, or you can try to have a light agenda, have a, a short meeting and make it to caucus, cause.
The caucus is seven typically.
Typically, and it typically is at Turkey Hill. So, you know, we're not so far away.
Um, there is some, somewhat of an impetus for this group though, um, because Mr. Willsmer was, uh, appointed.
Correct.
Temporarily. Mr. Willsmer will need to be nominated at caucus or take out papers.
Correct.
And that was mostly for your edification, Tim. If, if available.
We haven't scared him off already.
No, I'm sure we have. So I, I would be more than happy to make the nomination or anybody, any, any town citizen can, can go to caucus and nominate you for the position. And I really, I really haven't, I haven't, haven't heard anything from our, our missing, um, member.
And, you know, I have not received anything that would be going out till the twenty-seventh for the meeting agenda. But I would say the board would need to decide next meeting if they're going to continue so that as stuff comes in, we aren't scheduling it for that evening.
Right. Okay. So town caucus, if anybody has any questions on town caucus, please reach out to me individually or Adam. Uh, we can, we can give you the skinny. I'm not sure how, is town caucus, I mean, probably most towns in the state do it.
No.
No?
It's a rare. Very few towns do it.
So it, it, it may, it may do for, for some explanation. But just the, the skinny of it is that elected members need to caucus at town caucus and be nominated, to be on the ballot. Or the second way to become on the ballot is to take out nomination papers and get the required signatures, which I believe is fifty.
And that's the way most towns do it. If you want to run, you have to take out papers.
Yep. So, um, and I, I would, I'm not even gonna speculate. Surprise. Meeting schedule, six PM. We have the twenty-seventh, the March thirteenth and March twenty-seventh.
That's correct.
Any, any, anything else?
Nope.
On that, no. Ongoing items. Town and, oh, that was also my correct. Managing growth, zoning infrastructure and master plan. You know, I don't think we've really had a group meeting of the boards since, uh, we had an unfortunate accident here. Were you here? It was Mr. Luck had, had a, had a.
Oh, yes, I, that was like the first month I worked here.
Exactly. Okay. So it's been. Exactly, okay, so it's been like six or seven years since we've actually gotten together as a, a meeting of the minds for the multiple boards, commissions, committees, and, and other volunteer groups that we have, volunteer and elected. And I, I really think that it would benefit all of us as members and the town in general if we could all just sit down and talk about stuff and all be somewhat on the same page. I understand that everybody's got their own certain things they do, but everybody has a little bit of something to do with everybody else in, in this group of elected and appointed officials. And I guess that's the end of my soapbox. Master Plan RFP, we've discussed. Can we take that off of our ongoing items?
I figured we'd wait till we awarded it, and then I would just take it off.
Okay, sounds good.
Because Marjorie said the same thing, I said, don't take it off yet.
Good, good. And Pondview Commons, we've already discussed.
Yes.
So.
That's gonna be ongoing for a while, though, so.
Yeah, you probably won't have much of an update for a while.
Probably not.
Okay, full circle, back to public comment.
Not seeing anyone.
Okay, and a double full circle, back to board and comment and concerns. Anybody? I have something. And a little surprised it wasn't on the agenda, but the GIS hours.
Yeah.
Conservation Commission.
Yep.
So Bob Peace reached out?
He did. That, that's my fault for forgetting to include it.
No problem, that's why I'm here. So I don't have a problem, so just for your edification and, and, and Tim, for the past, what, three or four years? We've, we, we get so many hours, was it six or eight or?
I think it's eight.
Of GIS time support from MRPC. And we typically haven't been using it, and Conservation Commission had a use for it, so they've been asking us for it, and we've been giving it to them. So for a few years now, and I'm not sure what the impetus was, was for us getting them, and is there an ability for Conservation to get some?
No, it's, it's, it's part of the way that the MRP, that the regional planning agencies are structured. So we're, we, the planning board, are the member of the regional planning agency.
Yes.
So we're the primary board, if you will. So the hours are granted to the planning board to use as they see fit. And if the planning board sees fit to give them to Conservation every year, so be it.
Right.
And that's, I, I don't think we could assign them to Conservation every year. We couldn't say, well, we'll take four and they can have four. We would have to, we would make that vote every year.
Every year, okay.
Yeah. So it's really just a function of, of making that.
Okay. I, I guess my follow-up is, is, is there any, anything that you're aware of, any program that would potentially provide a similar service to the Conservation Commission on a rolling basis?
No.
Is there any way that we can ask or get more from either MRPC or from someone else?
Get more?
Can we get more GIS hours?
Yeah, if we pay them.
Without paying?
No.
Okay. So I, I guess.
Yeah, well, I mean, we pay MRPC an annual assessment.
Right.
And those hours are a function of the payment for that assessment.
Inclusive user to lose it?
Yeah.
Right, okay, that's my understanding.
And I would, I would imagine anything that we're gonna do with GIS is going to be wrapped up in the master plan over the next year, or part of the MBTA communities, which we're already paying MRPC for through the grant. So I don't see a need for those eight hours within this group.
Okay.
And I don't, and I think that the work that the Conservation Commission is doing relative to trails, maintenance, and wayfinding is important and has multiple benefits to the community, and this would be a good investment of those hours.
And is an excellent use of those hours, yes. I, I totally agree with that. My thought was that the, so actually, the master plan process, since you're, you're intimately involved in that, is there an inclusion of GIS hours?
Yes, not with, yes, there is GIS components to it.
Components to it, okay.
The eight hours that, so to bifurcate that work and send some of it to MRPC would probably end up being more expensive because coordination back and forth between the selected consultants and MRPC would just be messy, and then giving it to Conservation would probably have a greater positive yield.
Sure. And that was specifically referencing the master plan process?
Correct.
So who is responsible in town for deciding what layers get shown on our GIS? Are we, is the planning board oversee the plans?
No, that's through the assessor's office. However, anyone in town can request layers be uploaded. If they get uploaded, if they're created and are uploaded at a time when the assessor's office is doing an update, the upload is generally free. So the assessor's office does an annual map update, and it usually happens April, May-ish. So if you called the GIS company in March and said, hey, I've got this layer, I'd really like it uploaded, oh, well, do you need it now, or can you wait a month or two till we're done with this? I can wait, all right, we'll do it for free with that update. I need it now, it's November, it's like $250.
This is municipal government, you never need it now.
No. Uh, but, well, but if you just missed it, if they just did the upload and, and you were like, oh, no, this is something that we really shouldn't have up there. And, I mean, and that's a fairly nominal fee, but you have to have either the geodatabase or the shape file or whatever it is that you're trying to upload.
Okay, so these eight hours, do they include creating that shape file?
They can.
Okay, so I get, and, so sidewalks. We don't have many in town.
Nope.
So it wouldn't take much at all to make a shape file for that?
We do have a geodatabase of sidewalks with issues and conditions and all of that.
Okay, I don't remember seeing it.
It's not on the, the GIS.
So who would make the decision to put it on?
Well, that would be up to the DPW director, because it's more of an asset management thing under his purview.
Okay.
And it's for, he's using it as a way to track and decide where and how to, to do sidewalk maintenance.
Okay. My understanding is that you are not able to show gas service.
We don't have a, a layer of gas service that is proprietary information for Unitil and/or National Grid.
Right, so I, I mean, even if we did have, we couldn't show it. But I don't think that there is any such requirement for water service, is there?
Uh, that would be up to the Water District to share that with us and have us put it up. I don't know that anybody's ever asked, and it's not municipal infrastructure, so I don't know what the.
Well, it's always called quasi, so it's kind of. Okay, so I mean, where, where would the impetus come from? Anybody?
In theory.
Okay. I think that would be a nice additional layer to have. And, but that's just one person, I don't know if it needs a motion or what, but I, I think, and, and right now, I'm kind of drawing a blank on the things that I thought would be a good idea, but anyways, stuff like that is something that I thought the planning board could use some of those hours for, and not that it would be any more or less important than, than, than trail location and mapping and, and, and data collection, but.
I have to believe that the Water District has a GIS layer showing where their.
Yeah, I would.
Where their, their infrastructure is.
I would hope they would, yes, but, you know, it, it is, it is a.
It would also be up to them to share it with us.
Sure.
They could say no.
Right. And, and, you know, I, I'm, I'm a member of the Water Service, so, I mean, I could go to their meeting and request it. It's not a big deal. I was just curious.
It goes all the way out there?
I'm sorry?
It goes out towards you?
Courtland Circle.
Oh, yeah. I didn't realize that.
Oh, yeah. You didn't get it, did you?
Nope.
No. Yeah, so just, just stuff like that in general, I mean, and, and given the fact that, that Planning Board has MGL, what, 40A, Section 81?
Forty-one eighty-one.
Forty-one eighty-one A through double E, which is, what is it? Oh, I don't even know, because I see the codified, I don't know how many pages it. Huge, considerable, basically requirements of, of this group, of this body. Anyways, that's my thought. All that being said, I don't have a problem granting them to the Conservation. Again, it would need to be a consensus of this body. Do you remember him specifying a date they needed an answer? So we are just short of a motion to adjourn. While he's looking for that, does anybody have anything else they would like to add to this discussion about this or anything else?
None for me.
No? Mr. Willsmer?
No, nothing for me.
Very good.
He doesn't say, he just says that he would like them.
When do we have to use them by, or when do they get refreshed for us?
Uh, I think, I think they're fiscal year. So it would be July 1.
July. So is, is that saying we've got eight hours up until July, or come July, we have eight more of the hours?
Yes.
Both.
Mm-hmm.
So when, when we gave them eight hours last year.
It was about the same time.
So then we have zero hours until July, and then if we give them eight more, then we have zero hours?
No, because, yes, if we gave them to them now, we'd have zero till July, and then we, July, we'd get eight more.
But, okay, so if we gave them to them last year about the same time.
Mm-hmm.
Then we shouldn't have any until July of this year.
Why not?
Why would they give us double or more?
They wouldn't, because it's February. So if we gave them in February of '22, July of '22, we'd get refreshed, because.
Okay, 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 I get you. All right, so that's only four months, five months. How do you feel about that? We, we don't have identified a use for them. Conservation does. And, and I'm, I'm a strong proponent of just because we've kept doing the same thing doesn't mean we should continue to do the same thing.
Mm-hmm.
Without, you know, reasoning.
Right.
And we have the reasoning. I mean, I, I guess we could, we could have a motion and, and a vote tonight, or should we, because it's not on the agenda?
I think, I, I don't think it's a big deal.
It's not a big deal, of course, but just trying to.
Yeah, I, I mean, it would be cleaner to have it in an agenda item, but.
Okay.
It's also not.
I don't think it's gonna kill anybody to wait two weeks.
No, I don't think so either.
And it certainly wouldn't take up much time in our next meeting.
No.
Okay.
So why don't we just go ahead and have that on the agenda for next, and then.
Hopefully do.
Yeah, sounds good.
Sounds good.
All right, well, I guess it is that time then. Short of anybody else having anything else they'd like to add, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
I would motion to adjourn.
And I will second that motion.
Excellent. Any further discussion on adjourning? Hearing none? Roll call vote, all in favor, Mr. Willsmer?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Thank you very much to everybody involved and all those watching. Have a great night.